Let's call the meeting to order at seven and stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so Mr. Capron has rescheduled?
Yes, Mr. Capron, uh, he's under the weather, he will be at the next meeting. And then, I got a little ambitious under new business, the hazard mitigation plan. Uh, I double dipped on that one, we're, there is no hazard mitigation plan to talk about tonight.
Okay, amendments to the agenda, besides that one, is there any other?
Um, I'd like to add, uh, executive session personnel, uh, discussion under DSA three thirteen A three.
Is there any other changes needed, additions? Um, is there a motion to approve with the changes?
A motion.
A motion by Jay, second by Glenn to amend the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Carries, approval of the minutes from April nineteenth.
Second.
Uh, motion by Jay, second by Glenn to approve those minutes. Corrections needed?
Um, the question I had was, um, at some point in the meeting, I, I disagreed with Deb about, um...
Was that in there?
It i- it is in there, it came in a different place, so...
I missed it.
It came...
It's new to me.
Okay.
Yeah, but it was, it was in there, Bob.
No, actually, I noticed, gentlemen, I think I spelled green road wrong. I think there's supposed to be an E at the end of green road, and I don't think I did that, so I changed that or put that in there too. I tell him not to come for Haven.
Page four, right, right at the bottom, under old business, yeah.
Uh, other changes needed, other corrections? Okay, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Five minutes for a public comment, is there anybody for a public comment? Yep, go ahead.
Last week you guys talked about me. I'm from Four Washington Street, and I do not have water in my tires that are filled with dirt and hybrid tomatoes. For my children last year, because of what issues. So, I do have an issue. Cause I didn't appreciate that five days before you guys discussed me was when I got the, was when the letter was written. I feel an apology is a order.
Can you go, where are you located, I mean?
Washington Street.
Four Washington. And you received the letter from the police department?
Yep.
Are there questions for her?
No, I think I, I think I made a response that, that there was dirt in the tires and it was...
And there has been since the day I put them there.
There was dirt and the next day when this was brought up, I, I done a little snooping.
You can see it from the road, you can see it from everywhere, so the fact that this letter was even sent was kind of offensive.
Who sent the letter?
Our police.
Our police.
So we have received complaints about, uh, tires stacked in the yard, and we don't go looking for trouble. We'll, we'll send letters if we get complaints. And I understand that they are stacked and they are purple, but our ordinance doesn't say stacked purple tires are exempt.
Yeah, but they're filled with dirt, not water, which was the ordinance.
I understand.
So, and it's actually going to turn into teacups when I'm actually finished, cause it's a Pinterest thing, it's not just trash. For food, it's planters.
And we don't go look for the trouble, we're just responding to complaints.
Okay, but you could ask or look, I mean, it's plainly simple, that's what I'm trying to say.
I, I know that after the meeting, I went out and looked and saw that there was dirt in them. Then I went to look for the ordinance that says you can't have tires. I found under, uh, a junk ordinance, uh, that it mentioned tires. It didn't, I, I was looking for a little more specifics, I didn't, I, so I may not have the right, right ordinance, cause I wanted to see the ordinance that was being quoted.
So one, at some point they stopped becoming tires and started becoming planters.
Right.
Yeah, there used to be a lot of them, everybody used to have them years ago.
You're up on South Side too, you're up on...
Yeah, there's, there's a, there's a lot of them around and... I think the junk ordinance, if it was a big pile of tires that just...
That's what it was meant.
Showed off cars, that would be a different story, but, you know.
Where, where do we stand now, uh, is there a... A follow-up, a season to say, I'm just saying, where, what's the next? I haven't talked to the, to the chief myself to find out what, uh, what, what initiated this. After looking at the lawn and reading the ordinance, I'm trying to understand why we sent the letter myself, quite frankly. But, and, and I, but I don't wanna, there's, I only know what I just said.
Right.
I haven't talked back to, to, to the chief to understand what, what brought...
Well, like you said, a complaint, but, so I'm, my point is, is before you even send the thing, you should actually look and see, and you can plainly see that it's not just tires thrown around filled with water. It's, it's meant for something, it's not just junk, maybe someone else's junk, or my junk, but it's my junk, and I want it there.
You have a right to have it there.
And I do, so...
And I haven't seen the letter that came from the police department.
I haven't either.
It just came off in the board, or, um, Bill's report to the, to the select board, so I haven't seen it.
I just wasn't happy about the whole situation, because I mean, like I said, from the road, from driving by, from everything, I mean, they've been there over a year, one, two. You know, you can plainly see that there's dirt in them, and it's not breaking an ordinance, it's my art or my whatever, I mean, it's...
Yep, and I think Bob might have even mentioned that at the, at the last meeting today.
Actually, he did mention it.
Yep.
Someone did, I don't know.
One man's junk is another man's treasure, basically.
So we gotta complain, somebody thought it's not right.
Instead of wasting all that time of you been writing the letter, if you just look, like he said, you can look right out the window and see, you can see that there's dirt in them. You can see from here that there's dirt in them, it's not just...
It brings up a philosophical conversation, but, I mean, we have, if they were black tires buried, would we still say that it's art? From, from, so this came to my office and then I passed it to Bill, so if anybody's to blame, it's to me. Um, but from the ordinance that I work from, if there are tires, piles of tires, it violates the ordinance. And I see what you're saying, I hundred percent get it, but just from operational standpoint, that's what it was. If I saw a stack of toilets like, um, like was in your packet, and I got a complaint, I would do the same thing. And it's nothing personal, it's just, it's, it's what it is, so. But if they were black tires, would we still, would we enforce the ordinance? If they were half buried?
If they were full of dirt, no, I mean...
All right. So if you bury the tires, it's fine, but if you... You, you can see how it would go.
Listen, listen, I, I may be way out of place here, but I drove around after that meeting, and I do a lot of looking and watching. And up at the dog park, we had...
There's tires everywhere up there.
Tires everywhere, painted, they're putting them in the dog park for decoration. And they were full of water all winter and underneath the roof of the canopy there, so, I mean, where's, where's right and wrong?
Like personally, I think if they're taken care of and, you know, painted up, so they look, I mean, up on Mud Street, there's some up on Mud Street. There's some down on, like, my place on Suck on South Side. I'm not a purple person, but, I mean, you know what I'm saying? I, as long as somebody, as long as they're not strewn all over the place, I mean, you got them stacked, you've got, you've got sand in them, you'll have flowers in them eventually, you know? I see, I don't...
I see it more as a stack of junk tires that are just sitting there with...
Right, just leaving, somebody just left them, yeah, that's a different story.
Yeah, like we have down the street.
Right, right.
Yeah, exactly. And the hard part is taking the ordinance and interpreting it, and that's what Bill and the town manager have to do, and I personally think that ordinance needs some review in general. I mean...
I was gonna mention...
I look at some of the things we get, folks get written up for, and then you drive around town, you're like, really? What, what's wrong with that house, or that house, or that house, it's just...
Not consistent.
Not consistent, it's not Bill's fault, it's just, it's how you...
It's how the complaint comes in.
Correct.
We, we don't look for trouble.
No, I know that, yeah.
There's nobody driving around looking to find anybody.
I drive around, make sure everything's as fair as it can be, to be honest with you.
So where are we, all that said, where we are is, what I'm hearing from the, from the board here, is those tires with the dirt in them are, are okay.
Your flower pot.
They're, and, and to...
I mean, to Rich's point, we have the same thing up at the dog park.
Yes.
There's about thirty of them up there, all painted in the ground, no different than there's on the corner.
There's no dirt in them up there at all.
Oh, well, she's a step ahead then.
The ones up there, the concern of mosquitoes.
I think they're gonna be there.
They're gonna make like tunnels. Yeah, well, that's where I'm at, and I, and I had it on my notes for tonight, so I'm actually glad you came in, I really am.
What we should've done is done a little bit more investigation before we...
I guess that's what, I guess that's what I'm saying, like, I can understand getting complaints, cause, you know, that's what happens, but, I mean, before you send a letter and whatever, he said that he came to my house multiple times, which he did not. Cause if he did, he would've seen that there was dirt in them on top of it, and not that they were filled with water, instead, he just sent me the letter, and, like I said, you can see the dirt from driving by, so it's not like I'm... And it's been there over a year.
I was gonna say over a year.
Yeah, they've been there a while, quite a while, I could not say a couple of years at least.
So Joe, what's the ordinance process, if she gets a letter from the police chief and you, she comes to appeal that to the board, and there's action needed, or?
Um, I'll, let me ask the police chief.
There wasn't any, there wasn't any ticket to find her at all.
He said that, uh, one might be attached eventually, if I don't take care of it.
I think we'll, we'll advise that it's more comfortable with your planters.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I would say just, if you could work it out with the town manager, if that's okay with you, and then if there's still any issues, then bring it back, and we'll make a final decision, but I don't think there will be an issue.
No. And we are sorry you had to go to the trouble of coming here tonight to take care of it, shouldn't have to.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment? No, okay. Um, department head reports. We have Aaron on the line tonight, Aaron, you wanna, uh, do a, a report?
Yes, sir. Uh, what, um, so, uh, Highway's been busy, um, the first week of this period, the guys were up at the dog park for quite a bit more time than we anticipated, putting in the water line, um, for the dogs and watering the plants and such up there, as well as, uh, erecting the dog park sign. Uh, we still have some work to complete up there for sod, for where the water line was put in up there. Um, this last week, we were able to get a bit of the street sweeping done, as well as kids started on, uh, quite a bit of the spring grading, um, in the interim. In between that stuff, of course, then maintaining equipment and, uh, filling potholes as best we can. Uh, water department's got a few more meters they've done, um, some spring turn-ons have been happening, uh, as well as maintenance of the plant, and all the north tank is looking mighty fine up there, they, uh, had pressure washer up there and got that shined up pretty good. And I've been, uh, doing other in-plant maintenance stuff. Wastewater plant, the upgrade continues on, um, making significant headway over the last couple of weeks. Um, today itself, clarifier number one came online, um, so we only have one major part of process down there that's still down at this point, um, with being the anaerobic selectors, still waiting on some equipment to arrive for those to come online. But otherwise, most of the equipment, um, is operational down there at this point, with final touches on pieces here and there and everywhere. Um, still a lot of digging and finishing, tying in some of the newer process stuff with permanent, um, lines, as well as some chemical feed lines. Um, we're looking at, um, we had a meeting with, uh, Aldridge and Elliot and, uh, Naylor and Breen today, on the rework of the garage slash, um, chlorination, dechlorination chemical room in that building. And what we, what we can do to update that part of the facility, as opposed to part of the original contract, but, uh, we have some grant money left that we're gonna try and utilize to make that, um, more up to code, or up to code and, uh, more user, uh, safe, um, for our operators down there. That's about all I have for a report on that stuff.
Okay, uh, questions for Aaron?
I, I have a question, down by the bus stop down there on Main Street, is that the final proj, is that the final thing on the, where the dirt, where somebody put dirt in there?
Uh, I know there's copse on there, I'm not sure it's been seeded or hid just yet.
Well, you know, this is stuff that should've been done, right now is our grass starting growing season, and these things, these projects in, in the park should've been done. And, you know, there were some things that could've gone on a little later, and I just feel these were important things to be done. I mean, there was no reason to have that ripped up the way it was to begin with. And the, the, wait until after May first, before you start doing things, uh, I think there's a problem there. So, and the other thing I got, what about the cemetery, when is it gonna be open?
It's open Monday.
Okay, water's on?
Water's not on now.
Okay. When do you anticipate the water being on?
Uh, we have a link down there on the line that needs a rear repair before that comes on, before we can turn that back on.
When do you plan on having that done?
Hopefully in the next week or two.
I don't wanna see what happened last year with no water, when people are putting plants up there and there's no place to be pretty good water. So, I think we should look at that as kind of a priority.
Yes.
Okay. Other questions for Aaron?
This is Cedar Grove Cemetery.
Yeah.
Are you gonna stay on for the paving discussion?
Yes.
Okay, I'll, I'll ask my question then, cause it hurt.
About paving.
About paving, yeah.
Do you have anything?
No.
All right, thanks, Aaron. We'll be back to you in a minute or so here. Um, police department, I believe Bill put a, um, report in our packet, I don't know if you have anything?
I picked it up.
Mine's probably in the...
It's probably, it was probably later, I didn't get it.
Yeah, I haven't been in, I was in earlier this morning.
Anything you need, want to add to that, Joe?
Uh, no, I, I usually just hit the highlights from the chiefs.
Yep.
He did have ninety-seven calls of service, he's up to one thousand two hundred and seventeen calls, uh, for service total this year. Uh, two arrests in the last two weeks, one for driver's license suspended and one for disorderly conduct.
At the gentleman that threw the computer out the window?
I don't know what for, but that sounds like disorderly.
Sure, it's, it fits the description.
Yeah.
I saw that one online.
Just, just one comment, the rabies clinic, I heard was very well, we hadn't done one in a while, but there was quite a few people, a lot of people, well, well, well attended, and...
All day.
So that was a, that was a good thing.
An awful lot of dog licenses come in that day.
Yeah, and then it, it went smoothly, it was, was pretty quick, Drew, I usually use it.
All right, any other questions for PD? Okay. Um, town manager report.
Uh, we'll start with our budgets again, since we are coming onto the end of the, end of this fiscal year, I like to keep you guys up to date. Um, two meetings ago, I'd mentioned that we were just above where we should be for this time of year in oh-one-oh for our general fund budget. Uh, we are back under, um, where we should be for this time of year, we should be at eighty-four, eighty-four point six percent spent, we're at eighty-two percent spent, eighty-two and a half percent spent, so, uh, we have reined in spending.
Don't tell anybody.
I, uh, I track what I call the burn rate, how much money we spend every two weeks, we shoot for three, three point eight percent, three point eight-five percent, we're burning at about three point seven right now, so, spending has come down, and our budget is back in line where we should be. Uh, moving on, so, we talked, uh, last, last meeting and the meeting before that about the Wing Estate down on Fourth and...
Mechanic?
Mechanic, yeah, that's where we had the rats, that has been finalized. The attorney came in, did, did give us a check for a little more than twenty-two thousand dollars in back taxes and water, so, uh, that's done.
Has it been sold?
Yes.
Well, hasn't it been sold?
The transfer is final.
Is the same owner, or is it the half owner owns the whole thing now?
Uh, the half owner owns the whole thing, yeah. Oh, we did not receive the class two grant for Scott, that we were gonna use on Scott Hill, that was not given to the town of Fair Haven again. Uh, may...
Does that mean it's not, it's not on for next spring?
No, ex- exactly, Scott Hill will not be paved.
That's a real problem.
Oh, absolutely, did, did they give us anything with six years and, and nothing, uh, up there that, uh...
The, the spreadsheet they gave me last year when I asked, just showed, it just showed who got the money, and that's, they don't really divulge why or how. The reasoning, I shouldn't say that, the reasoning that I'm told is, you don't have enough class two roads in your, in your town, so towns who have more class two roads tend to get more of the money.
I watched Castle and pave their, their road to the state park twice while we've been sitting in queue. I just don't know what it's gonna take to get Mount Pilgrim, uh, we've talked to our representatives, they, they are supposed to be pushing, and we still, if you're feeling frustration in my voice, yeah, I think we're been...
I think you're gonna see, we're all right there. I think you're gonna see Town of Castle's got about eighty percent more class two roads than we have.
Yeah.
And that's what he's just, what Joe just said, was that we don't have enough class two roads, they go to these towns that have more of them.
We should give Vtrans to drive that thing, that you can't keep a vehicle on the road in some...
Well, I feel the state should do most of Scott Hill anyway, because it's a...
It's a park.
It's a, it's a main drive to the state park, and so...
Right up the highway, yeah.
And, and I won't beat the dead horse to death, but we've got Fourth Street, which is a class two road also, and if we can't, we've been over six years and we can't get Scott Hill. That shimming that we're doing, uh, well, we'll probably shim a couple of times before we ever get to the top on that one.
Well, we, we, we have a proposal, that's, Aaron will talk about it during the pavement, but we do have a proposal with class four, uh, with Fourth Street. That was on the, uh, the list this year to pavement, this year to pave anyway, so, um...
All right, we'll come back to that.
Yeah. Uh, more good news, I guess, we, we had the salt shed out to bid, um, and we received no bids. I reached out to the state asking, I asked them, uh, I've never had, I've never had a project go so lucky as this one. My, the response I got was, well, let's let it sit for a week and then try to rebid it. At this point, I'm not sure what, what we're gonna do with that. We'll wait and see what the state says, I guess. Uh, we're looking for sometime this, sometime next week, we'll be, we'll have an RFP for the sidewalk for downtown, um, we'll be reviewing that and releasing that. Our playground equipment, if you bend down to the playground, that's going in, it's looking good so far, uh, they should be done with that, hopefully Thursday, um, we'll see what the weather looks like. We're doing a career fair, well, I'm doing a career fair tomorrow at the high school, they were nice enough to invite me, so I'm gonna go talk to some kids about possibly having a career, uh, in municipal government. Big part of my day, just as a heads up, my day and Eileen's days are holding down the fort for the accounting position. I'm still doing the payable, she's doing the payroll, and it's, it takes a little bit of time, we're still, we're still learning. I did talk to Nemrick, and they're gonna, they sent, I got a little bit of education last week, um, the third week of this month, they're gonna send somebody down again. Um, they're gonna help us, uh, they're gonna start with our month ends and with our, what we gotta pull for the audit, so, that's something I don't know how, what we need for the audit, and they do, so they're gonna help us, help us with that. Uh, I met with a, oh, there's a lot today, um, I met with a co-op housing specialist last, must've been last Monday or Tuesday, they took a look at the trailer park. The idea was to see if, if they could help develop a program to do some financing, clean up the park, and then turn that park over to the, um, current residents. Uh, he said he's gonna crunch the numbers, but he is not, hopefully, there's, there's really nobody down there that's paying right now, and the park is so far gone that he just doesn't think that it's financially viable. And that's, that's kinda where we left that one.
So, I'll ask this question again, where are we with, um, help mitigating the fact that these people are not gonna have a place to live at some time, at some point?
Yeah, so that's...
Where's the state at this, that, where, is there any, any kind of help, we can't just leave these people hanging?
Again, it's, uh, so thi- this is a concern of mine, and it just, we're not, when I say we, I mean, the town staff, we're just not equipped to rehouse people.
I, I get that.
Um, a suggestion would be, uh, if I, if somebody was to ask me, what am I gonna do, I would say go talk to Fair Haven Concern, talk to Rotten Housing, Rotten Regional Housing.
Is that what it's called?
No. That's not right.
But this isn't something, this isn't something that was just sprung on them. I mean, this has been going on for at least two years, two to three years.
Yeah.
You know, somewhere it's gotta come to them, it's gotta stop.
I, I don't disagree with that, I just think that, that what's happening is somebo, there is some, somebody in the state deals with this, and we're not getting any cooperation, we're not getting any kind of communication or anything. And I don't even know who you talk to, but there's got, this isn't the first time this has happened.
So this, uh, the gentleman I talked to, uh, you reminded me, Bob, he does, uh, he did provide me, in fact, with, uh, the name of a state agency that will help rehome, um, people, I haven't reached out to them yet, but there is a state group that does that.
We need to be prepared for this, they need, they need to know that this has happened.
But this problem, we're not looking to go into, they're losing water, a ton of it, every day. We're not looking to go into another winter where we say we can't do anything about it because it's winter time. Or, you know, our, do we have a game plan for either tax sale, or, uh, I'm, I'm all for helping get it home, but, but folks, we've been, we've been to this well, multiple times, I, I'm with Jay. It's time that, we shouldn't be going into another winter with, with that place still open.
True.
It needs to be, the water needs to be shut off, needs to be shut down.
I, I agree with you, I, I...
Just how we get there.
I totally agree also. But I just want us to, I want us to do what we should do to make sure that those people have, have an exit strategy, and, and if it's just to give them the name of somebody, that's fine, but they need to know what's gonna happen.
The, the, the plan for this, so I've been trying to get this tax sale going, yeah, it's, I've been saying this for, I think, four months now, um, I just haven't got to it, but the, so the water will be turned off, unless they can come and, and pay the bill. Bills are going out again.
It was forty-two thousand the last time we looked at it, it must be now...
Well, and the thing of it is, if they've got a bad water leak, we have to... Well, and the thing of it is, if they've got a bad water leak, we have to process all this water. We're not getting paid for any of it. So, every taxpayer, everybody that's on the water system is footing the bill for this. And it's gotta come to a halt. I mean.
Isn't it, isn't it my understanding that that process of water is not supposed to go back in the ground without being treated? For the most part?
For the, our town drinking water?
Yeah, your chlorine.
Uh, that I don't remember.
Aaron, do you have it? Yep, chlorinated water is not supposed to be, um, released into state waters without being dechlorinated first. Um, most of that water, either state waters right there would probably dechlorinate itself by the time it got to the water body. Uh, but yes, in fact, you're not allowed to drink or have chlorinated water released to state waters. Um, you're supposed to dechlorinate it when you do it.
I mean, I, there's no, there's no strike for, for that park. I mean, there's nothing good to be said about it. And I don't mean that at all. I'm not defending, blowing up on it. I don't, I think we moved the process forward. But part of that process has got to be to give those people some. See, the thing of it is, even if, even if someone comes up with forty-two thousand dollars to pay the water bill. And the leak's not fixed, it's just gonna, next three months from now, we're gonna be back in the same boat and it's gonna be winter time again.
Yep.
It's not fair to every other taxpayer in this town.
I agree. Sanders, uh, Sanders office reached out about the, so we applied, this is the year we'll get the bridge, I'm sure. Um, so, we applied to the Sanders, uh, office, the Welsh office. And we submitted a grant to, directly to DOT to get the bridge funded, uh, two point six million. Um, Sanders reached out, they do this, these con- congressionally directed spending programs. Um, Sanders reached out, they wanted more information, which we supplied. Uh, the Welsh camp reached out. Um, asked for two hundred and fifty to finish this, the town hall project. Uh, they reached out and asked for more information.
And the bridge, right?
And then the bridge, yeah. We, we submitted to Welsh for the bridge too, but they didn't ask about that one.
So the, the Rutland Regional Planning Commission, are they, cause there's federal dollars, you're looking for the bridge. And you're a lot more optimistic than I am about getting federal dollars. Uh, so the state one, where does the state one? So we have, we have two shots at this one here trying to get the monies for the bridge.
I got, uh, a, a three shot, three, three or four shots totals. Um, with the state money. I went to the last, um, what is it called? Tac meeting, transportation meeting for Rutland County. Um, we were ranked fourth on their list, uh, for, to get that replaced.
And they're supposed to have a expanded list this year because of their extra money. So hopefully, fourth wouldn't get you there normally, but maybe.
It, it's a long shot, yeah. So, we're pushing in every direction we can, it's just.
Yeah, cause if it doesn't, with all, with the monies that's out there right now, if it doesn't happen, I don't see it ever happening. Unless we pay, unless the taxpayers, and then, I don't, I don't see it ever happening. If we don't get it.
Did you have any luck with, um, getting the, um? Remember I was telling you there is a, uh, program for rural areas to, to get hold of, um? Get hold of, uh, um, the, the infrastructure money. Did I, did I talk to you about that?
Through the USDA?
No, it, it's a, it's coming actually from DOT, from the, from the federal DOT. And what they're doing and they're seeing is that most of the money is being grabbed up by larger municipalities. Because they have the staff to go fill out all the paperwork. But they were supposed to set up a thing that rural areas got. And I, I, I put a bug in Welch's ear again on that. And I thought I talked to you about it.
Yeah, that's, I did see one for USDA and I found another paving through DOT. That was explicit to rural communities, but, um, I'm not sure if that's the two that we.
I'll ask that one again.
Yeah.
I have no shame.
And this is something we've been pounding away on our reps to the, to the gov- to the US government is exactly that. Like, big cities like Manchester, cities like New Manchester, New Hampshire are considered rural. You know, they have staff of hundreds and they have the capacity to get a million dollar grant. Unfortunately, Fairhaven has, has me. So, you don't have staff of hundreds. And, and it makes a difference.
Yeah, it does.
Uh, okay, moving on. Lights in the park, we, no movement on that. They did ask for more information. We provided that with them. Salt should be talked about. Town hall renovations are moving forward. Uh, the masons should be here next week to put in the blocks for the, the elevator shaft. At least that's what they told me today on our meeting. Let's see, Aaron talked about wastewater. Uh, playground is, is going in right now. Sidewalks, we get RFP developed next week. And that's what I got for you.
Okay, uh, questions for Joe? Uh, moving on to the topic of paving again. Joe, do you wanna go over what you and Aaron have come up with considering our not getting class two funding again?
Sure, and Aaron can, Aaron, you can speak, uh, in depth, but just as an overview. Um, the plan was to, uh, to get, uh, Scott Hill paved this year, like we just talked about if we did receive the grant, which we didn't. Um, that does open up funding for Fourth Street. I know the last meeting we had, there was some concern about how bad that road was. Um, and I think everybody agrees. And I think we found a solution to make that happen. Make Fourth Street, get Fourth Street paved. Aaron, do you wanna talk to more specifics?
Okay, so I met with, um, Mike Mullin, uh, last week. Um, he's trying to get his schedule set up, uh, to get his paving lined up for the year, of course. And, uh, with our signed contract with Swamp Road, um, that piece is already getting put into the, um? Into his plan, uh, for paving, so he would be out here hopefully the third week of June to get started on that. Um, so, if, if we're, so without the class two up on Scott Hill, we're short by a lot of money to get the work done. Um, with Fourth Street, it would work better for us, um, to get that paved due to Furnace Street. Needing the mill to come into town before we do any work on that street. And Furnace Street is one that we'd have to get done before, um, they, uh, we have to push off those residents more. Uh, so the, the plan as of now, um, thought would be to go forward with having. Um, Pike come in and do the milling on Furnace and also on Fourth Street. Take those roads down to where we want them and to shim those roads right after they're done with Swamp Road. And then they would leave town for a few weeks, a month or so to give us time to do all the elevation changes. On all the structures on both those roads, um, to include ditching and a, um, dirt work to get that road ready. So, with the mill coming through, uh, we get a set somewhat elevation, then the shim. Give us a good, a good grade to shoot, or, uh, structure elevations off of. So we know when that paper comes through at its final course, what it's gonna lay, and so those structures sit exactly where we want them. Um, budgetary wise, um, we had planned for, um, Furnace, Union, um, and Fourth. But that puts us pretty tight to what next year's July one's money comes close to. July one would be, um, a hundred and eighty-five thousand of outside roadwork. And the fifty thousand that the voters approved on for extra spending for paving, uh, to the two thirty-five, two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Um, the estimate for Fourth Street, Furnace and Union come in at, uh, almost two hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. Um, so with, that would be very tight on making that come through by the time we sign the contract. So what we're looking to do would be to drop Union Street for now, as that road does not need any mill work. Um, cause our, to get the mill in town, um, just for a little piece work is, uh, very expensive. So, the best bang for our buck is to have that mill come in and just do Furnace and Fourth and pave it. Without Union Street on this, uh, proposal they have, we're looking at just shy of two hundred thousand dollars of pavement. So we'd have thirty-five thousand dollars there for picking up what we, um, any changes in the pricing. And getting some of our, um, uh, crack ceiling done that we should be getting done. Um, the only addition in that, um, that we need, I wanna catch while the mill's in town. Is the Airport Road underpass, uh, for Route Four, so we have to maintain clearance on that road. Um, the vertical clearance going through that tunnels. And, uh, we'd have to have the mill come through the mill out while we're gonna put back the pavement. So we would have the mill just run that section through there, um, while it's in town and then repave that. Um, until we, you know, can pave all the Airport Road and then finish that end of the project.
So you're paving just under the bridge?
Just under the bridge, yep.
Okay. Because there's a lot of work to do, a lot of work on that road to be done before you decide to pave the whole thing all the way up through.
Yeah. Yep, um, but the plan would be is while the mill's in town, it fits under there. Just have them mill that, so we don't have to try and get that mill back just for that section.
What are they putting underneath? How much are you gonna put on that? I mean, a couple inches or an inch or what are they doing?
It would be two inches.
Two inches, okay.
Yep.
Will they do that the same time? Will they, will they, uh, put some pat or? Yeah, will they put a base in that when they're here doing the other two roads?
Yeah, um, probably would, yes. So it would mill it and then, yeah, probably shim.
Yeah, cause you, that'd be quite a drop, I mean, a two inch would be quite a drop for cars to keep passing over that. So if they got power to shim on there, you know, it wouldn't be so bad.
Yep.
So Aaron, can you just recap what roads you would be doing, just so?
Yep, so Swamp Road has already been, um, contracted. The contract we'd be looking to sign would be to have Furnace milled and milled. And, uh, paved two inches and Fer- uh, Fourth Street, sorry, Furnace and Fourth Street, we're both gonna mill. And fill of two inches. Um, and then just the underpass at Airport Road. And that'll keep us within hopefully about two hundred thousand dollars of the two thirty-five we have for paving for next fiscal year.
Okay. Swamp Road is not part of that. Two hundred and thirty-five.
No, Swamp Road is this year's.
What are you gonna do, I'm saying this, it's not your fault, but what are we gonna do? What are we gonna do about Scott Hill? Uh, it is, uh, I, I took a ride up there the other day. It, it's not passable in places. You literally have to go on one side of the road or the other to get, to, to get through that. Um, we gotta do something. We gotta, and now not, not being able to promise springtime next year. Is a, is a real shock. I mean, that's, that's real bad news.
So with, if, if the, you know, paving comes out like it should and we have that little bit of money extra. We can talk with Pike about going up and getting, I'm pretty sure if we wa- uh, if I told you we'd go head up there and meet at the same spot. We'll probably, we'd probably meet at those same spots. Um, and if we have to have them shim those spots just to get them through the winter. Um, with, you know, a lot of that road up there needs ditch work at the same time, get that all done. That would help save those sections, uh, till we can get the funds to actually get through that.
I think it'd be better just mill down and nothing put back than the way it is now. It's just terrible. I don't know. I don't think it's.
We've talked about it might be just easier to have the rototiller go up there and make it a dirt road, so we can actually put a grader on it, maintain it easier, so. But, I don't think we should do that at this time.
Rich, go ahead.
Well, uh, my, my opinion of Scott Hill is, let's spend as much time as we can up there. When we're not working on some of this other stuff with the ditch, with the excavator and get the ditches established back in. And if we can shim it. I don't think rototilling up there is gonna do any good at all, cause it, wheel tracks are a foot deep. So I think, I think the thing to do would be to get the drainage back in, get a lot of the driveway culverts reset so that they drain good. And then get a shim coat up through there wherever possible. The worst of the worst, of course. Cause we should free some money up for paving, like Green Road where you put the culverts across. We talked about that. We should get some, that, that should be some, some money to hand patch them in and get them so they carry through for the next year or two. And, uh, I think the big thing is to stay right on the ditching and cutting the shoulders down as much as we all possible can. I think that's gonna help save the pavement. This pavement's not gonna get any cheaper. It's, there's gonna be another big price increase real soon. Fuel of six dollars and something a gallon.
My only question, Aaron, is, uh, and just, just throwing it out there, we're gonna be milling Fourth and Furnace. And we talked with Munger Road of wanting to finish that off with the, with the base of, of the milling. Is that something that, that is cost restrictive that we can't do? Or, oh, we have them right here milling that stuff up?
Uh, I'm sorry, I'm missing maybe is it that you're asking if they transported up there and just laid it up there?
No, I, I was, part of the discussions when we were talking Munger Road is we started putting some milling material down from, from the north end. And we, we didn't get it finished. And now we're, 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 we're milling again Furnace and Fourth. And we, we have it right there pretty close, uh, is? Now the time to put that, that stuff down? Or is it, would it cost us too much money to try to move it around after we put it down?
So, um, I'd have to talk with Pike, of course, cause their figures usually are, um, just to come to the barn with it. Or to the airport and leave it there. Uh, to have them try and put it on the road, I think would, they would, they would say, no, they're not gonna go out on that road at all to spread it. So, it would still be just determining where we're going to stockpile it for, unfortunately for us to have to handle again ourselves.
Well, and, and we, we got a huge pile, and I'm not finding fault, Aaron, but I mean, I got this huge pile of milling that's been sitting up there for a long time. That I know is gonna be eventually a base for a salt shed or, or town barn. But another big pile up by the, uh, I don't know if I wanna see another big pile of milling sitting up at the airport.
No, the, the last time I talked with Pike, I told him the figure on it would go to the barn, um, for now, so.
Okay, I know. And I just, just wanted to, didn't know if it was coming into our thinking, cause every time we start talking. I, I, I get into the conversations from years ago saying it was supposed to be finished, we were gonna put the milling down. And we, we stopped halfway down Munger Road. Is, so if you don't have the conversation, you, you don't move the dial.
Has Pike ever, has Pike ever offered to, to, uh, take the mi- take the grindings and reduce some of the paving? Cost of paving?
I could ask him, uh, with the pro- or with the way things are changing, they never know if it might be worth money now. I know in years prior, it would cost more for them to remove or something like that, but I will ask.
Because they use it right back in the asphalt. I mean, they, they go back and screen it through it and they put it right back into your mix, so. I mean, I would think there'd be, it's, I would think they'd get something out of it, you know?
Yep, I will ask.
Okay.
Good, thanks, Aaron.
So in general, I mean, we have what we have for money, but is, is that plan upper?
Yeah, I think.
With what we have, I mean, it is, it is what it.
I think as long as we can do Fourth Street right with drainage and everything, I think it's probably the best bang for our buck at this time.
The drainage is there, we just gotta get the water to it.
That's correct.
And Aaron, have you reached out to any of those homeowners on the, near the bank end of Fourth Street? I know Rich had mentioned some of the, the sides on there are pretty full.
Yep. We had, not as of yet, we were, um, the business team was just waiting to talk with you that, or looking forward to. Um, make sure that, uh, that's the re- the direction we were headed. So, uh, maybe a throw, a little throw the bone in there is look, we're gonna come up here and do this work and, but there's, you know, new blacktop right behind it, so.
Yeah.
They'll probably call the fears a little bit better.
Okay. Alright, any other questions? Alright, thanks, Aaron.
Go, go for it, do you need?
Uh, you know, just, uh, let the board know that, that now that we're doing this, we will start sending, we will send letters out. Uh, you know, just, uh, let the board know that, that now that we're doing this, we will start sending, we will send letters out to Forest Street and let the folks know that the guys are coming through with their, with their equipment. And, and something else to point out that you guys, everybody knows, but it's, it's important to at least note, um, without that voter approved fifty thousand, Forest Street doesn't get done. We don't have the money to do anything else but the union and. Yeah.
In hindsight, that was-
It's, without that, this doesn't get done.
All right, thanks, Aaron. Um, new business, road and bridge standards?
Yep. This is our annual, uh, certification saying that we're following state road and bridge standards. It's signed by the board.
And Aaron, that's the case?
Do you need a motion to?
Yep, we do not accept the state roads, bridges standards, uh, if we were to receive grant money, we would be ineligible.
Gotcha, okay.
Doesn't seem like we have to worry about that.
Uh, a motion and sign it, yes.
I'll make a motion to sign the certification of the town road and bridge standards.
Aaron, second? Second. Uh, motion by Glenn, second by Bob. Um, questions on the motion? Um, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries? Um, highway financial plan?
So the, every year the state asks for, for how much we've, uh, the town has approved for their, um, highway maintenance, and that's what this is, we're just gonna send that to the, to the state.
Why should they care?
Good question, I don't know.
I mean, in, in theory, you should send that back and tell them to stick it. I'm really, I'm just, I, I'm beside myself with that, because we have less Class II roads, we get less chance at Class II money.
Or they using that against us.
Or they using it against you, yeah.
They're saying, well, they put it in something hopefully, then they'll give it to somewhere else.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just, I'm a little bit sick of hearing about standards that I should maintain.
The local state representatives won't help us out on any of this?
Well, one of them's running, running for office to represent Benson in Fair Haven and West Haven, so twenty-two A is getting special dispensation this year. But.
Yeah, cause the district's getting split.
Yeah. Hear what you're saying, but I'm thinking it's a, it's a formality that I, I, I'd rather, I'd rather send a message a different way than not signing this. So, I, I'm-
You're, so motion by Glenn.
You're much more, uh-
Diplomatic.
Diplomatic.
Bob didn't second it, so.
A motion to sign the annual financial, uh, uh, plan for town highways, I'll make.
So why do we, why do we need to sign this?
Formality, it's a-
It's a required form of failure to send it in, it's for there.
It has a statue, uh, state statue on the back.
Uh, nineteen VSA three oh six J, there's a statue that says you will do this.
Without, without signing that, we're not gonna get any consideration at all.
Well, we'd get less than the little consideration that we're, than we're getting now, uh, uh.
Which we heard to measure.
See, once again, you're under the gun all the time from the state, and they don't care, they just want all this crap, and we get nothing back. That's the sad part of the whole thing. If they wanted to come in here and do a study of our stuff, they'd be right here in a heartbeat with me, and they'd be sending all kinds of money for a study.
You'd better make us pay for it.
Yeah, you know, I just-
I think Glenn motioned it and Rich seconded it.
I'll second it.
Um, any more comments on it, or? I see how Jay's gonna sign his name on it.
Half a cent's better than no cents.
That's the way I'm signing my name.
All right, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed?
No.
No.
For you, no?
No, I, I, I'm-
He's an aye.
I say sign it.
Okay, so, so we have-
I don't think we're gonna-
Motion carries.
Motion carries.
Uh, I think just Jay and Bob are not.
They'll still sign it.
They'll sign it anyway.
Yeah, I, I got my signature ready. That'd go like a, right, turn it, that would like that.
Oh, so this-
Thanks for nothing.
So, yeah, emergency management plan adoption?
Local emergency, yes, and this is just for Chris to sign.
And that's another formality, we do it yearly?
Well, this is what this one here is, right?
Yeah. Yes, we, uh, we update this every year with phone numbers and names and-
I'll, I'll make a motion out of the select board chair, sign the local emergency management plan.
Is there a second?
Second.
We did make the change, uh, we did make, uh, some edits to Glenn's phone number.
Right.
So, yeah.
Okay, uh, motion by Glenn, second by Bob.
Just the chairman has to sign this script.
Looks okay, yeah.
Yeah. It looks like the same one we did last year. I mean, there were no such to be-
Okay, any questions on it?
I was gonna have a question, I can't find it where it is now. Oh, um, I just, yeah, on the shelter manager. She was the one that used to be a fair even concern, correct?
Who, uh, what's the name?
Ashley, Ashley.
Right, Ashley, she's not there anymore.
Is she still in Fair Haven?
She lives in Fair Haven.
Oh, okay, well, guess I'll take care of that. I didn't realize that.
What does that release it as though?
Shelter manager.
For forty-nine A?
For alternate local shelter and for the primary local shelter.
Better reach out and tell her she's still on the list.
Congratulations. I'll, I'll make sure the United Way now, right?
She is, she's United Way, so she does-
Yeah, but I mean, I, she may still wanna do that, she, she may, I mean.
All right, any other questions? Okay, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And so the last one on that.
Okay.
National Incident Management System proclamation.
I'll make a motion that the chair signs the, uh, National Incident Management System proclamation.
And this hasn't been done yearly, last was two thousand and six?
Yep.
I'll second it.
Been a couple of years. This is, this is what our, our emergency management uses, is the NIM system. You know, everybody, our, our emergency managers are all certified, you take the classes online or in person. I think I have a couple of classes that I've taken, so.
Did you, I, was anyone listening, do you motion approve?
And it was seconded by Jay.
Jay.
Okay.
Uh, motion by Glenn, second by Jay. Um, questions on that motion? Okay, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And now a first look at our water sewer budget.
I think that's what we should do, is take a home look at it.
It's a good idea. Yeah, I think so, I mean, if there's anything glaring that you-
Yeah, I, I just, it's easier to go back, before we start discussing anything, it's easier to go-
You have water and sewer, hell, man.
Here.
I only have water.
Here's three places. Uh, it just, you go home and look it over and then, you know, do your crossing out what you wanna do or reducing, and then you come back when you, when you start discussing something. Everybody has some idea and what the other people feel, uh, what you're doing.
Yep. And as always, if you have questions, stop in, see Joe and get what you, what you need. Um, this is current, actually, I wanna ask questions now, sorry. I'll wait, this is current, all right, perfect, everybody's good with that, we'll wait till the next.
I don't have the sewer end of it.
There's just one paper on that, on the sewer, right here.
Oh, that?
That's it, yeah.
Yeah, the staple together, you should have water and sewer staple together.
I have water.
Oh, you know, have sewer, well, I'll get you sewer.
I would, that would be helpful.
Yeah, here, here.
Yeah, I don't think we do, Joe.
Think you need some?
Yeah.
Well, I have one.
Email it tomorrow.
Yeah, get it to us.
Page three had sewer reserve allocations, but it didn't have the sewer.
I'm sorry, guys, well, I'll get you, I'll get you sewer.
Yeah, okay, off to me and pick one up.
I'll pick one up till tomorrow.
I'll bring it up. Too hard for me to read on this one.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay.
Uh, parking lot?
You said there were some meters that had been put in? So where are we now for what's left?
I don't know how many, Aaron, do you, here he comes.
I think we're, the way I was talking with Ian Lee the other day, I wanna say we might even be pushing the high thirties.
That's, that's left?
I believe, um, I can try and get, I'll get a hard number, uh-
Well, that's, that's, that's okay, I'm just wondering if, we didn't send any letters out, or we did send letters out?
Yeah.
Close the chat letters and-
Did we get responses from any of them?
We did, so a few of those people have already, and there's a, a few of the people that did come back right away and, uh, were looking for us and did their meter change, uh, after that letter was sent.
Okay. Be nice if we button that up like first to jump here, first to go.
So we're still in the thirties, it's got, for, for a melt?
Mike told us, I thought a thirty-four or something.
Yeah.
Also maybe it's less, and my apologies, I do, I don't have a hard number for you, but I know they-
It's around thirty.
But they made some movements, so.
Okay.
People have been very resp- they've been, it's been a positive response, it hasn't been an angry, so, and that's nice.
One was.
Was it, probably.
But after I explained it to them, because they thought that the fine was too excessive. And I said, then just change it, and so we, when we went back, and I explained it all out to her what the deal was, whatever was fine. I mean, there wasn't all, she said, well, I'm gonna, I'll make the call and, and get an appointment, so.
Yeah, nice.
Cause she wanted to know if they could do it on a Saturday, and I said, well, I don't know, you'd have to talk to the water department.
They probably could, there's, there's work, sometimes they're working.
They indicated that they would.
Yeah, so, they're very flexible.
I'm pretty sure that they'll call, it's, you haven't, if they haven't already received it.
And, and just to get on the high horse about our, our weekly readings, we have really saved people a ton of money and, and problems. Cause we catch those, those water leaks and those bursts, you know? Sometimes it's in days or hours when it happens, and it is a really great benefit, it helps people a lot.
I think it is too, I mean, how many times can someone just forget to turn off the faucet?
It's-
Or leave one on and have a hose break.
A hole.
Yep.
Yeah, good. All right, um, board roundtable? Or is there anything else in parking lot? Uh, roundtable?
Rich?
Yeah, I got, I got one thing still hanging.
Okay.
The garbage at Sixth Grape Street, where are we at with that?
Oh, you know what, if there's no movement, there's no movement, I'll have to reach back out to the mortgage holder.
There's been nothing.
Yep, I can reach back out to the mortgage holder. Um, those people just showed up, we thought they had abandoned the property, so we reached out to the mortgage company to let them know. Mortgage company showed up and, and locked and secured the property, and, and then all of a sudden the people showed back up like two days later, so.
So is it still locked up or what?
They, they were inside the property when, they actually called me, so, yeah. I, I don't know where the long story is, I, or the short story is, I don't know where they're at, it's, we're gonna have to send maybe the health officer if it gets too bad.
I don't, I don't, I get worried when he doesn't show up to me.
Anything else, Rich?
Uh, that's all I have tonight.
Okay.
What about talking to that second candidate for the accountant again?
Um-
We gotta do something here pretty soon, we gotta, it's gotta be taken care of in-
Sure, uh, so, so we wanna fill the position with, with the right person.
I understand that.
And I'm, I'm not sure if she had the, very qualified person, no, I'm, no doubt about it, but qualified for that position, I don't, I, I think we, I don't think it would be right then.
Too long of a pot.
Yeah.
Have you had any other candidates?
We had one person, I have two people of interest, one person sent a resume today.
How about the treasurer?
No hits on treasurer. Nobody gets, nobody seems interested at all in that, it's-
Put it, put it out in paper, just for-
Is that treasury? That's not a full-time job, Greg, that's not a full-time-
It was like- About ten hours a week, but ten hours a week for the year for three thousand five hundred, and I know it's not about the money, but that's extremely low. I believe if you, they had a treasurer job that was in that more of the eight to ten, we wouldn't be having this problem, it's ten hours a week.
The only, the only other thing, you know, it'd be nice if we could get one to do both jobs, that'd be, that'd be terrific. Because that would also boost the amount of money you're, you can't do that, you can't do that.
Can't have one.
That's right, that's right. Well, the only other thing that I would like to have put in the minutes, that now that, uh, we're paying for the town clerk's health insurance, that job is now a forty-nine thousand dollar a year job. I just think that should be in the minutes. Because I don't know where we're gonna get the other six thousand to pay for the insurance, but I think everybody should know that that's not what it is, that's what it is now. That's all I got.
Um, Bob? Um, can we start getting a delinquent tax report? Can you start getting one?
Yes, of course.
Just some, yeah, nothing serious. Uh, I should have said this in the, in the parking lot. Uh, we had the director of, uh, Rutland Regional over here at, uh, last meeting for the zoning regs. Him and the person who's doing the ascribing, Deb, are, uh, gonna get together and do all the, all the, the things, you know, that capitalize where it's supposed to be capitalized, you know, all that little crap stuff that you gotta do. It will be, then we have a few more things that, that we will present a final, final, um, um, thing for you guys to look at. Uh, highlights of that would be, uh, possibly lowering the, um, um, shortening up some of the side setbacks and front setbacks and in the, in this area, the, the, the tight part of the community. Um, it, it, a lot of times people can't put a deck on because they, they don't have, and it's just ridiculous, so it, um, but there's little things like that, um, I'm trying to think what else.
Parking.
Parking, yeah, one of, one of the things that, that we insist on for our, for apartments is two parking spots per. And almost everybody else does one. And it, it's, it makes us restrictive beyond what is normal in the state, that kind of thing like that, so, so that's some of the things, there'll be a few other things, but nothing really horrible, can you think of anything else that, that I'm missing?
Um, a few, oh, you look, you talk-
Yeah, yeah.
I'll take the notes for that one, so I was just, if I could think of anything.
Anything else on that?
She's got nothing else to do, you know? Just takes notes for the whole town, you know? But I, uh, anyway, so that's, that's where we're at. It'll come back, I would like to think that sometime in June we should be, we should be done and then get right onto the, uh, get onto the town plan, get that, so we should be okay with that. And we're kind of leaning on Rutland Regional a lot more than we have in the past, and they've been very cooperative, so we'll see where that, how far that goes. And when they see what we have, they may not want to. Um, the other thing, just for future reference, it, it may be time to bite the bullet again, and, and when we do budget, just forget about asking the town for that fifty thousand, just put it in the regular budget, it seems like that's what we're spending. And, and, you know, it's, much as I hate to say it, it's, but everything costs money, so we should consider that.
That's gonna be even more than that, Bob, next year.
I know.
We're, we're, this is just the tip of the iceberg, we're in trouble.
Yeah, I know.
We might have a bond or something.
It's, this is, but, but again, we can't pave while we're drunk, we gotta have that drainage, right?
Right, right.
Get a, get a longevity out of it.
And that's right, one of my plans was, is if we can pay off some of that debt we have on all this equipment, can we get a small bond to do some of these bigger paving jobs? Kinda get on top of it again, and then maybe not the-
It's not a bad idea.
It's not a bad idea, I, I don't know.
Bring, get everything back up to snuff, so then you just have to do your regular meet, regular meet, but what's your, but again, what you could save on these payments, all this stuff, that you certainly would be able to take care of a bond, I mean.
I think so.
Uh, before we leave you, on the plane, but have, have you discussed the second, that, that request for the second drive-through for McDonald's, is that?
Yep.
Has the decision been made on that?
They're, they're okay, it's gonna go through.
It's gonna go through?
Yeah, I, I don't think Will Dodge was too heavy, but we've done some other things to mitigate as much as we can his problems, which is if, 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 what happens quickly is people see that there's a, uh, line there, so they go right by the line and turn around in his place, so we're trying to get away from that. One of the things we did is that grass strip that's between the two roads, we shortened that up considerably, widened the opening, uh, the driveway opening, so, so they can get in a little, little better. McDonald's, I mean, they're, they're in there to make money and, and they wouldn't do this if, they wouldn't do what they're doing if they didn't think it was gonna help. Uh, that they're giving up the back part of their parking area where big trucks or boats and trailers could, are. They, they cut back, um, where the, the bump out where their, um, where their, um, garbage dumpster, dumpsters are, they shortened that up. They're, they're trying to make, they're trying to make it faster to get people in and out of there and they know, they obviously have done their, their work on this. It's not like they're, they just thought, you know.
No, they only have to do is get their service better.
Well, yeah, I mean, and, and that goes with like everybody else knowing they got help and the help you got is not overly wonderful.
Yep.
Go ahead.
I, I only had one, hearing some questions around our contact for, for Greenup Day, which is this Saturday. And what's the, is there a schedule of anything that's going on or anything like that?
So, I did reach out to Bonnie who was running it last year, um, I do have a name, but I wanna confirm with her. Cause I, she told me and then, yeah, I forgot what it was, but, um, I will get that out on Facebook, uh, to let people know.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, other? You're good, okay. Uh, review of finance reports?
Wait, one more quick thing.
Yeah, go ahead.
The car showed us last weekend, was that a, did somebody get a permit for that or didn't they do it?
Yeah, no, they called and asked.
Okay, cause I wanna say that there was a lot of people in town, so I mean, I think it was a good put-on program. I would like to see them gone around the backside of the park a little bit more instead of coming up Main Street, but it was well, very well attended, there was a lot of people there.
That's great.
And I was there, I got there about probably one thirty or so and, you know, you'd have to stop in the street because people are going across. There was, that's all, it was.
Yeah, it was well, it was well-attended.
And it was very, I think it was a very well-run, and whoever was doing it, I think they should, you know, something said to them that, that they did a good job.
Thanks.
And the food truck was just lines and lines and lines of people that are, so, somebody did well.
Okay.
Yep.
You got the warrants, Bob?
Yeah, uh, motion to pay the payroll of thirty-five thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars and ninety-two cents.
Second.
Uh, motion by Bob, seconded by Jay for the payroll warrant, questions on that? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll, I'll abstain.
On abstention, okay, uh, motion carries?
Motion to pay the warrant of eighty-seven thousand, ninety-seven dollars and twenty-one cents.
Second.
Okay, motion by Bob, seconded by Jay for the general fund warrant, um, questions on that? I think there was a couple notes on there?
Yeah, there was two.
One, one for insurance, wasn't there, one for insurance too, or something?
I think Sludger Bubba was ten thousand and.
Yeah, Slud, Slud was a big one this time, uh, Slud was ten thousand.
We still going to Rutland with Slud?
Uh, Rutland or Schenectady in fact.
Really?
Yeah, they found a decent deal over there, so they, they send it where they can get a good deal, uh, fuel was fifth, uh, fifty-two hundred dollars was the other big one.
Was that for a delivery to fuel, I mean, we have a.
It was delivery to town hall and the shop and just everywhere.
Okay, other questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll abstain.
Motion carries, we want abstention, um, checkbook status?
Is six hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars and thirty-nine cents.
And then we did have one add for an executive session for personnel.
Yep, I'll make a motion to go an executive session for personnel discussion, uh, VSA three thirteen A three.
Second.
Uh, motion by Glenn, seconded by Jay, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries?